Initially put in place, this is the first graduating class where the MCAS was not a graduation requirement, but students could choose to take the MCAS to pursue this scholarship. So, we invited the scholarship awardees here tonight, and we're fortunate to have some of them joining us in the audience tonight, and I'd like to just take a second and read all of the scholarship recipients' names. Since they're behind me and on camera, if they want to stand and take a wave for the camera, you can certainly do so if you are in attendance.
Should we shake hands?
Gabriel Arabic.
Do we clap that time?
Sure. Allison Barcelou. Liam Brown. Malcolm Brown. William Burke. Brianna Colo. Emily Frank. Ariana Kletaka. Emma Kletaka. Kayla Kletaka. Cooper Looney. He already stood. Sam Ortenzi. Declan Otto. Madison Seha. And Michael Toth. I believe our plan is to take a short recess and congratulate those who are in attendance here. We have some late refreshments, but again, just want to recognize this group for their hard work and diligence in a time where this class, like I said, didn't have to take this assessment. These students made the decision too, and I'm happy to say for them that it seems to have worked out in their favor. So, congratulations and appreciate all your hard work.
We'll take 15 minutes and we'll be back. That was really lovely. Thanks so much, Stephen, for inviting them. It was nice to see them and kind of recognize them.
Of course.
Okay, now we'll get on with the rest of our agenda. Next is the consent agenda, minutes from May 24th. Has everyone had a chance to read them? Any questions, comments, additions, subtractions? If not, I'll take a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. May 24th. Second?
I'll second.
Sorry. All those in favor? Aye. And then next warrants, 72 and 74. Questions, comments? We have them here to sign. If not, I'll take a motion. I guess I'll make the motion to approve warrants 72 and 74. Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay. All right. Visitors' comments. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee must sign in with the administrative assistant prior to the opening of the regular session of the school committee. The visitor will identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no more than three minutes. For anyone who is unable to sign in ahead of time, we ask that you clearly state your name and address so that this information can be included in the record for the meeting. Do we have any attendees up there?
You have four.
Employees, I think. Do we have any visitor comments? Just hit your raise hand button. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Student representative report, Marcus.
All right. I don't got too much tonight. Y'all know it's the end of the year, everything's wrapping up. We have senior week this week, so last night was the banquet, Thursday's awards night, and Saturday's graduation.
Yay.
We got finals week starting this Thursday, half days starting this Friday, and then continuing Monday, Wednesday through Wednesday. Wednesday is the last day for all students. And then the student elections went out for the high school. I will be reprising my role as class officer as president, and will be running for this position again next year. Just have to be officially elected in. Have been elected in every three years, so don't plan on anyone running against me, but then I gotta find someone to replace me.
Yes.
Last year with me, everyone.
Big shoes to fill.
That's all I got, really.
Are all of the officer positions filled?
For the seniors, everybody was uncontested and filled.
Excellent, excellent, excellent. So, it's you as president, Madison Gay, vice president. Who's the treasurer?
Abby Hubner.
Abby Hubner.
And then recording secretary is Eva Bartos, and corresponding secretary is Lauren Pecker.
Excellent. All right, rising seniors, here we go.
This is it.
Anything else?
Not for me.
Do you think you'll come in over the summer at all, or this be your last meeting till fall?
I make no promises. Perhaps a one-time stop through.
If we bring refreshments?
Sure, let me know. Maybe I'll bring refreshments next time.
Oh, now see, I like where you're going with that. All right, Marcus, thank you. Any questions or anything for Marcus before we let him go?
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marcus.
All right, I do not see Jill. So, I think we had talked about this. Should we remove this and then regroup in the fall and see? I don't want her to feel like we're calling her out or anything, so. Then we'll regroup in the fall. New business, Tertwells.
Yeah. They're not here tonight. There was some miscommunication, I guess, between me and Jackie, so would you guys like them in July to have like an end-of-year recap? Would that be more useful?
That sounds good. And we should know by then if it's free lunch or not for the fall, maybe?
I would love to say yes. I don't know. Again, each day goes by and we don't hear about it, I'm kind of surprised. There's really no new information on that, so I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know. So, we can move them to the July meeting, which we're coming up with a schedule, I'm assuming, right?
Yes, we have to talk about that today, yeah.
So, they're not here, we'll get them here for July, one of the summer meetings. If that works for everybody.
Sounds good.
Sorry about that.
Do you guys still have your 21-22 folder?
It's in, it was reorganized. Looks great, I think.
So, it's now called School Committee Primary Folder?
Yeah.
If you click in that, everything goes to the Resources Folder.
On my phone, it's not coming through this way, so when I was looking at stuff, it didn't. No, it's very fancy.
So, we had talked about it last meeting. I probably should have sent out something that we had actually followed through and done it.
So, this should be, we should have, this should be 2022-2023.
22-23 would start with our July meeting.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. So, we'll do, sorry.
Once we know the dates.
Squirrel, sorry.
We'll figure that out. I know where you're going. Once you know the dates for July, we'll.
Yes. We'll reach out to them, and that'll be good then. So, that's quick. All right. Open School Committee Seat Discussion. So, I know we have one person here that had expressed interest. Did we hear from anybody else?
I have not.
Jackie, did you hear from anybody? No?
I had not heard from anybody else from Kathy. I wasn't sure if anybody, and nobody reached out to me, but I wasn't sure if anyone had reached out to any school committee member.
No, I hadn't heard from anybody, so.
So, Mr. George Balki?
Balki, Balki's fine.
Balki.
I'm not particularly around.
Okay. So, I guess the way that it will work is that we will give your name to Kathy at Town Hall, and she will give your name to the Select Board, and then I think we have to appear in front of the Select Board, and they will formally appoint you for a one-year, a one-year term. Do you have any questions or anything for us?
I haven't.
All right. Excellent. So, we will send an email and pass that along.
Yep. And I'm happy to set up the time to meet. In the meantime, if you have questions, and I'm sure any of the committee members will be as well, my understanding is Mr. Balki, like a lot of our members, has children in the district as well, so I knew that because I heard it in the call from East Meadow the other day at pickup line. I was like, oh, I heard that name. So, happy to, like I said, meet with you and appreciate you reaching out and expressing interest. I think we're always looking for a new voice, and anything that we can help with you to help the transition, we're happy to do so, and I think the summer tends to be a little bit lighter, but it all depends on what's going on at any given moment, too, so. But, happy to have you, and we'll talk about some meeting dates and stuff tonight, so if you're able to stay, great. If not, obviously it'll be recorded, and we'll get you all that information at the appropriate time.
Do you want to sit up at the table while we talk about dates, just so that you, you know? So, we're not awkwardly like this, we don't have our back to you. If it's all right with you guys, since we have, is there a RFP call you George?
Oh, yes.
Okay, great. While we have George here, I think I'd like to rearrange the agenda and talk about our summer dates. We have some proposed, I saw in the folder. Bear with me, I'm gonna grab my calendar.
There were not any proposed, just so you're aware, there's nothing proposed for July. And Jackie?
Those are from last year, sorry.
Yep.
What's that?
I've been ones that I was looking at, were from 21-22.
Okay.
Yeah, 21 to 22.
So, okay, today is, what is today? Today is the 7th, and we have one scheduled already for June, June 21st. So, we have the flexibility to do whatever we want, pretty much for the summer. In years past, we've had one meeting in July, just one meeting in July, and then two meetings again in August. I feel like we're in a position where that makes sense for this year. I'm not sure what you all think. Do you think there's anything that's coming up for fall that's gonna need as many meetings as we had, like, in the past? It feels like we're in a better.
Yeah, I think.
Situation right now? I mean.
Yeah, I think COVID-related, it seems like we're in a better situation, although I think we have all learned that that can.
Change in a time.
Change pretty quickly, but.
As long as they post 48 hours in advance, we can, you know, we can always schedule that, so.
I'm just gonna wait a little bit. If we could, the one meeting in July, make it second or third week, and the only thing is, and we'll talk about this later, the RFP for the food service contract just got posted, and that would, the new contract would start 7/1. I'm not, the process won't be finalized by our 6/21 school committee meeting, so we're gonna need to vote and accept and do all that stuff, so.
Okay.
Push it out a little bit in July to give us some time, that'd be, that'd be great.
I was looking at.
And I didn't know what time you.
I was looking at the 19th. That's three weeks after the 21st, and then it kind of, you know.
And I'm not available that week, I can already tell you that.
Okay.
I mean.
It is what it is, right? So.
I think in the summertime, we're gonna have a hard time anyway.
As long as we have quorum, so.
I just wanted to just make you aware.
Yeah. We'll have to check with Audrey to see, but can we tentatively put the 19th?
19th works for me.
Okay, does that work for you?
Yeah.
Okay. George, does that work for you?
I'll probably be on a night shift rotation, but I might be able to remote in from work, if that's an option.
To, I have to say it again?
I'm working night shift that week.
Okay.
I might be able to remote in or something to that effect, or.
I think that that is still okay, right? They haven't lifted it, so, yeah. I think, and it's summer, like we said, as long as we have quorum, it's not, you know, anything too.
Right.
So, and we can, we'll check with Audrey as well, and if that date doesn't work, we'll find another one.
And the only other thing in terms of summer dates with June is we're just gonna have to watch for the evaluation piece to make sure that we have enough time with the subcommittee to turn around the evaluation for that final.
So, we had one scheduled for the 21st. Do you want to change that date then, so it gives us more time?
Because we just asked that, I know if you saw just the.
Yeah.
Send out, it was just to have all feedback due back by the 14th.
Mm-hmm.
Which then just gives us that week. I'm hopeful that that'll be enough time to have a final.
Would it be more helpful if we did the 28th instead of the 21st?
Is there, is, does that mess anybody up?
Well, the 28th kind of is not great. I have family coming in from North Carolina that day, and it's my mom's birthday, but I can, could we potentially do the 29th instead of the 21st? It's a Wednesday.
Yeah, I mean.
So, not the 21st then, and move it to Wednesday, the 29th?
Yeah, I just think that would give us some more time, just to.
Yeah, I don't want you guys being rushed to do. This is not a process we want to rush.
Do you think we need both meetings? Do you think you'll need the 21st and the 29th? We don't need a meeting in between, because it's not something that we're gonna be able to bring back and kind of talk about twice.
Okay.
It's just that we need that timing.
Sure.
To just organize people's information and make sure we come up with one solid.
Sure. So.
Final.
So, we're going to postpone the meeting for the 21st and move it to the 29th, yes?
Yeah. We'll have to check with Audrey again, too.
Yeah.
Does someone want to text her and see if she thinks the 29th might work? Because that's really.
Yeah.
I just, you know, I'd like to be able to kind of know where we're at.
So, then we're saying July 19th, and then August, school starts what day?
Teachers are back. New teachers are back, I believe, Tuesday, August 23rd and 24th. All teachers back the 25th, 26th. Students scheduled to start on the 29th, if memory serves me right.
Yes. 23rd, 24th, new teacher, 25th, 26th PD, 29th first day.
Okay.
So. I'm away the week of the 8th, or the 9th, is that Tuesday? If need be, I could remote in.
Are we talking about August, Jane?
August.
I'm looking at August 16th and August 30th. So, that gives us a three-week break from the July 19th, and then we have the 16th and the 30th as two scheduled meetings before this, you know, right in time for.
I'm away the 16th, but.
Okay.
That's.
Yeah. Do you think there'll be?
You guys don't need me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we.
We can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's okay with you guys.
All right. Then.
And then the other date, sorry to interrupt, just so you know, the other dates that Jackie put in, she just used the process that you all use to set this year's calendar to avoid vacations and stuff, so she just used that as a starting point.
So, are these meeting dates in here from, they're from last year? Mm-hmm, yeah. So, let's see. Do we want to just go with these summer meetings and then schedule out, or do we want to get them all now?
I have the calendar.
I mean, I can, we can do it, so.
I have the calendar, she has September 6th and 20th.
Or is it on the?
October 4th and 18th.
Which calendar are you looking at?
Copy here.
This one?
If I share it.
So, not in the School Committee Resources one?
It should be, in today's meetings folder.
That's this one? Nope. Yeah, it has green highlights for the proposed dates.
You have it, Stephanie?
I do.
Jill, did you find it?
Not there yet.
All right, so Jill and.
Where, what folder is it in?
It's in the June 7th meeting folder.
Oh.
I just shared it with Jen and Jill.
Yeah, I was there. How did I?
I have to get used to where everything is now.
I just started taking the calendar into the search on Popdrives. My first time.
That's what I, oh, you know what? For some reason, yeah, I see it.
So, where are the dates?
So, click in that one.
That was strange.
All right. Yeah, I'm gonna do it this way. So, today is the 7th.
I mean, I, I think it looks very, it's exactly what we did.
Right, so with having the meeting on 8:30, then we'll have back-to-back meetings, so maybe we don't, maybe we just do one meeting in August, like, split the difference and do, do the 23rd, and then do the 6th and go with the dates that we have proposed? I don't know if you, unless you guys, do you want to start the year off with two back-to-back meetings?
I'm just concerned that if we're going to be looking at school committee goals, setting goals earlier, having all of those pieces, that that's going to be a lot of work and a lot of time, and if we're only meeting once here or there, like, throughout the summer, September's gonna happen, and other things are gonna start to pick up, and we're gonna be like in that September, October timeframe again.
Well, I was thinking we could dedicate the entire meeting, and, you know, we don't have that much. We could do the bulk of the agenda to work on that stuff in August, one of the meetings in August, if we do both. So, so we're saying we can do 8:16, 8:30, and then 9:06, and then we'll just be on the cadence that's on the calendar.
16:30 and 6.
9:20.
And we could always, if on the 30th, we feel like we've had enough meetings, we could cancel the one on the 6th and then pick up, or.
Well, right. We just have a short meeting.
She even put the 3 in November, so there's one in December.
Yep. Perfect.
At least all the green dates, that's what that looks like. And because December's busy, we try to do one and then kind of leave those here.
Well, that January 3rd, we have to schedule for some.
I think there's only one that I can't make, so that's pretty good. Mm-hmm. All right, so I will read them off as they appear, and so we're saying there, our next meeting will be Wednesday, June 29th. Then in July, we'll meet once, July 19th. Then 8:16, 8:30, 9:06, 9:20, 10:04, 10:18, 11:01, 11:15, 11:29, 12:13, 1:03, 1:17, 2:14, 2:28, 3:14, 3:28, 4:11, 4:25, 5:09, 5:23, 6:06, and 6:20. Yeah? All right, so we will go ahead with those, and George, we'll, once we have your email and everything, we'll send, and you're officially sworn in, you have to go down to Town Hall and.
Sure.
Take notes and raise your right hand and all that. Once we have all of that and get your email established, we'll get you in the folder, and you'll have access to all of this.
Okay.
Awesome.
You're welcome.
Any, any other thoughts on dates or anything? Okay. All right, then, I think, so we've got our summer dates done. And we did the open city. Okay. Back to item C, ACAB-R, first read. So, Policy Subcommittee has already read and worked on this, and this is our first official read of this one?
Correct.
There weren't many things adjusted or changed, just.
Updating.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we just added our name and initials where appropriate.
Okay. All right, we don't need to vote on it until it's, until it's second read, right?
Correct.
So, move to put it on the second, well, not move, we'll add this to the June 29th agenda for second read and vote. Does anyone have any questions or comments on, on it as it stands? Okay. All right, query policy discussion.
So, there was some discussion around school committee being queried. I did reach out to our attorney, and she said, essentially, I can go find the email exactly, but essentially she said that, you know, there's no reason that the school committee has to be queried, but if the school committee wanted to adopt a policy where members had to be queried every three years, similar to what we do to employees, it's certainly in the committee's purview to do so.
So, I sort of have mixed thoughts on that. Do other school committees do that, do we know?
I believe some do, but not all, is the impression that I got in talking to our attorney and some other superintendents. But I know some definitely do, but others don't.
And if they don't pass a query, does, what does that mean?
If they don't pa, if they don't have like an acceptable query, then, I mean, essentially it means that that person.
Can't serve, or?
Not that they couldn't serve, but can't have any unsupervised direct contact with youth, with minors.
Okay. For me, I think because this position, I know it's an elected position, but it is attached to the schools, I think that's important information for, you know, you, Stephen, to have at least knowledge of and communication with each school committee member if there are concerns or are not. And, I mean, there are instances, even, you know, waiting for meetings to start, or, you know, if we come in and, you know, want to walk through the building, or different things like that, that could have the potential for some unsupervised time with students, not, maybe not much, but the potential for that, and I feel like it would just be dotting i's and crossing t's, to just have all the knowledge.
Yeah.
Available.
Does Kimberly have draft language that we could use, or?
I can certainly ask her for that, and that was Jill's point, is exactly the point I made to Kimberly, and I think I shared it with all of you, where I felt like, as a. where I felt like as a school committee member, you have an increased likelihood that you could be in that position for direct unsupervised. I think her and I disagreed a little bit on that, but those scenarios that Jill laid out where you're here first and our school committee rep, student rep is also here, things like that. Um, so, I can reach out to Kimberly if it's something that we want to take a look at. I'll reach out to her and then at least get a draft that we could work from.
Yeah, so I think it would be nice to see what the policy would work out, look, wow, would look like, and then, um, to see if we can schedule a time where we can all go and just get, um, quarried for, for this position at. Like I think I have an active quarry in the school as far as like chaperoning and.
We could bring everything here essentially, so you could sign the paperwork, we could get the copies of the license.
Yeah.
And then Jack, you could run them the next day.
So I think we, you know, once we get the, what the vermin should look like, I think that would be a great idea, and just like you say, dots all the i's and crosses the t's and this kind of makes it fill in, yeah?
Alright, so maybe by, well, you can send us the language beforehand, um, but let's put it back on the agenda for the 29th. Okay, Subcommittee Liaisons, we have to wait until we have, um, George officially on, so 6:29. Okay, Superintendent Report of Entry Findings.
Just keep cruising through.
No, I just realized that, and why don't you, could you grab me one of those agendas and we can.
Sure, good.
Put that down to George, just so he can see.
Yeah, so.
Sorry about that, I didn't think of it until just now.
So as I mentioned, um, at our last meeting, I think the, the next two agenda items are really closely connected for these purposes. I think the fact that the Report of Entry Findings and the End of Cycle Review are happening at the same meeting, for a first-year superintendent makes a lot of sense because the entry findings talks a lot about, speaks to the work that has been done this year, the listening and learning that I and the administrative team have been trying to do in our schools throughout the community. And then it lists, and I've kind of said at our, the new superintendent induction program, that it's not really a report of entry findings, it's really a report of entry wonderings. There are things that we started to scratch the surface on in year one that warrant further expl, expl, exploration, or us to dig in or look at it in a different way or collect some additional data, so, you know, I do think F and G on the agenda are very closely connected. I'm also not gonna read the 13-page, um, Report of Entry Findings unless you'd like me to.
Yeah, I could.
But I, I think we've talked a lot over the course of the year about what this, what the purpose of this plan is, and I think sometimes, um, having been an administrator in the district, being an internal candidate for this position, people might say, well, you've known the district for four years already, so really this allowed me to look at the district, one as a whole, not just focusing in on one school, and looking at it through the lens of a superintendent. And wanted to provide opportunities for staff, students, parents, and everybody to give feedback. What are their perceptions of and desires for the Granby Public Schools? You know, trying to build that foundation so that we can have open communication. There, you'll see, I've identified four categories and some perceived strengths, areas, um, opportunities for growth, and then some guiding questions that I hope will, um, you know, this becomes the blueprint for some of those next steps that we've talked about. Jill referenced school committee goals, um, our next strategic plan, um, district, or district improvement planning, school improvement planning, my goals, and all the way right down to educator goals. I, I hope that this, the plan is that this becomes that blueprint for the, this work. So over the course of the year, in terms of data collection, it's been a lot of document reviews, contracts, looking at agreements that we've had, articulation agreements, um, getting into classrooms, the administrative team, I think, has done a really good job of getting into classrooms. I think you'll see, a, as we dig through this a little bit, we're finding that, again, we're not finding this, we knew this already, but just being in the classrooms isn't gonna change practice, right? That's not gonna improve student outcomes, but this year, just getting people into that mode where your superintendent and your pupil services director, curriculum coordinator, principal, we could be stopping at any time, and it's not just looking at an individual teacher, but it's really trying to look at like our collective approach to teaching and learning. And, um, we scheduled at least one hour a week in both schools, and I would say we held true to that at about 90% really, and I think, um, you know, we visited over 100 classroom and workspaces this year. I think we visited every teacher in the district at least once. And, you know, there's some next steps that we laid out in that. Also, it, this involved me attending activities, not just at the school, but in town, different fundraisers, athletic events, student activities, Dyno Fest, Town Meeting, Charter Days coming up, things like that, and I think one thing that the committee, that I heard from the committee through the interview process last year was about visibility and being at these events and, um, making sure that I know the community and the community knows who I am, so, um, that's something that I've really tried to pay close attention to, and we won't be there this year at Charter Day, but, but one of the next steps that I foresee is having a table at Charter Day, having a table at Dyno Fest, so we can get some information about the schools out to people who are attending. You know, looking for not just myself, but the administrative team, teachers, school committee members, potentially to, you know, be present at those events and help make those connections, because obviously the five school committee members have connections in town that I don't necessarily have, and I think being able to build on those is really important, and again, not just me, but pupil services, curriculum, our principals, teachers, paraprofessionals. Granby to Go does have a table at Charter Days this, this coming weekend, so we will have some school staff there, but I do anticipate we'll have a table moving forward. Again, looking at document review data, I, I try to set it up, so looking at the four standards in the, um, in the administrator rubric, and what we looked at there. And then really, I, I think the process as a whole has just allowed me to get a better understanding, and appreciation for the town and for our schools, and, you know, recognize that some of the things that we deal with in Granby are very much unique to Granby, and other things are, are similar to what other districts and schools are dealing with, and the solution may not be the same in Granby as it wa, is in another town. But I think knowing that other towns and school departments have gone through some of these things is certainly helpful, not just for me, but I think for us as a system. Really boiled it down to, again, four categories, designing powerful learning experiences, I think you might remember that from the district priorities that we set last summer, the leadership team set last summer for this school year. Meeting the needs of all students, when we talk about all students, it doesn't just mean, you know, students with disabilities or EL students, it also means our advanced students, you know, students who are struggling with, um, trauma or socially and emotionally, students who are excelling academically, students who are struggling academically, it really does mean all individuals. Communication, systems, and structure. I think some places where we as a system have been frustrated or feel like we get stuck, it's through either lack of communication or a lack of a system or a process that is repeatable, that is not dependent on a single person. I think sometimes we do become dependent on a single person who may have this institutional knowledge, rather than trying to set up a system that is repeatable no matter who the person is or may be. And then probably no surprise to anybody, I, I think certainly to the school, not a surprise to the school committee, but finances, operations, and facilities. I, I don't think I would have been doing my job or being honest in the entry plan if that wasn't an area, I think. You know, despite, I think, feeling pretty good about our budget process this year, there's other things when we get, when we start talking about facilities, the capacity at East Meadow, those things that, um, are really big picture items that, um, we need to continue to explore and begin to identify some solutions towards. So below that, we get into those emergent themes, and, um, there are strengths, opportunities for more inquiry and growth that are bulleted out, and then some essential questions that, um, I hope can guide our work. And it's in each of those categories that I just laid out. You know, for example, in designing powerful learning experiences, in the interviews I've had, in the conversations I've had, it is clear that like teachers, our staff, our personnel is absolutely considered a strength by anybody that you talk to. Students, parents, colleagues, faculty, it is certainly a strength in an area in which, um, we should be, we should be looking at to, to build, how do we build on that, because that's so important? Not every school system is fortunate to have that. I don't know if you want me to focus in on certain areas or opportunities for growth, I know there's a lot in this, and it's a lot to take in, but, um, you know, the, the, the areas of strength are things that I see as potential building blocks, right? That's our foundation, if we're doing this well, how do we build on that? Those opportunities for growth doesn't mean that something's not existent or isn't happening. Again, it might just require a better process, a better system, um, a new way of looking at something, or even being open to a new way of looking at something, and sh, and making that shift.
Was there anything when you were going through this that you found that you were surprised at? Like when you were looking at your, you know, your, something that struck, struck you as like, oh, I hadn't thought of it that way, or I was surprised?
Yeah, I don't know that I, I think surprised is a fair word, I, I think the cur, the curriculum and really lack of a cohesive curriculum that's vertically and horizontally aligned, right? I, I knew that a little bit at the junior, senior high school, and we were able to piece things together. But really unpacking some of the things at East Meadow, I, I think that was an area of surprise, and, um, you know, the good thing about this is, because that's a theme that we started talking about last summer and even prior to that, the good thing about that was, we didn't sit back and wait for this report to come out, right? Like the work continued, and when that grant that we've talked about, a number of times came out, we said, we'd be silly not to pursue that, because that's an area of need. We've identified it, we've backed it up with data, we know that building a better liter, having a better literacy curriculum, foundational literacy curriculum, specifically grades K through 5, was an area of need, so we pursued that grant, and again, $111,000 that I'm really, I'm really excited to bring in the, the materials, but also yesterday, the training started, we had our kindergarten and first grade, I don't think second grade was yesterday, but kindergarten, first grade teachers attend the training with the, with the publisher, and, uh, talked to Sue Greggo today and said it was a really good first meeting, and, um, having that curriculum in place, beginning to implement that and establish it for next year, and then already talking about how we're gonna build professional development for our K to 5 teachers around that, because we know there's gonna be questions that come up throughout the implementation, I think is really a, a really critical step for the di, the district and, um, having that anchor that we can continue to go back to. So that was one area, and like I said, I don't know that surprise, but I think I felt a sense of urgency around that piece. And I shouldn't just say I, I think the team certainly felt that. You know, meeting the needs of all students, one thing, this is another area that, not sure that it's a surprise, I, I think the question that often came up is, you know, what are we doing for those students who are more advanced, right? Those students that are struggling, have these supports, have this in place, but what do we do for a student who's above grade level, who is really killing it in their math class and doing well in ELA, and really trying to unpack what that looks like, and like when we talk, again, about meeting the needs of all students, it's those students as well, and when we talk about differentiation, it's not just differentiating and scaffolding down so students who might struggle can access it, it's, alright, we have data that says this is a third grader who does math at a fifth grade level, so why do we have questions about this student's behavior when we continue to give them third grade work? How can we differentiate up for those students? How can we think creatively about ways that tho, that student can continue to challenge themselves? Because they still might be, they might be reading at a third grade level, but math is something that just works for them, so what does that look like? And again, like I said, it, it's an, it's a plan of entry findings, but it's really about wonderings, because I don't have an answer here tonight to say, well, this is what we're gonna do for those students, but I anticipate through conversations with the leadership team, um, parents, students, and teachers, we're going to be able to identify a path for, um, those types of students, and again, we're still, we're also not forgetting those students who are struggling, how do we continue to build, um, supports in places in, for them?
That was kind of, kind of one of my questions and notes I wrote down, I kind of saw a theme too with the students who are at a higher achievement, specifically at East Meadow, because there aren't opportunities for advanced classes or honors classes, and it seems like for a while, we have a lot of data, but my question is like, what are we doing with it? How do we use it, especially in those grade levels where some of these kids, you know, are capable and are maybe losing interest or those things, so that was definitely something, I don't know the answer to at all, but I'm very eager to hear how that's gonna be explored.
That's come up, uh, in several of our, like, focus group meetings, when we talk about transition and, um, capacity and things, you know, that's, it's becoming a theme, so it's nice to hear that it's, you know, and read that it's in the plan, but, so that we can try to figure out what to do with that, and I, I've noticed, you know, we're increasing our AP class offerings and stuff at the high school, so there's like a little chunk of people that we don't really know what to do with, but we've gotta keep some of that being able to, you know.
Especially to keep, like, to retain those students too, so that they don't feel like they outgrew the space, like, I was so, I don't wanna go down a rabbit hole, but so impressed, like when we got that course load from Ally, like I must have shared that with probably a dozen people, to say, look at what they have in 7th grade, 8th grade, like all these new things coming in, because I don't want that steam, especially at the lower elementary level, being like, oh, you know.
Yeah.
Um, they're kind of spinning their wheels, so it's really great to see it, I think.
Yeah, and I also think, like I mentioned, teachers need to be a part of the, that creative problem solving as well, and saying, it might not look like what it looks like next door, it might not be advanced or honors classes, but how do we differentiate even within our own classroom to say that, right, the student who's two grade levels above in math skills, is there something that we can set up where it's project-based for them, that they can do some more inquiry and more learning around that in that content area, but then we bring them back when they need some additional support in ELA or science, right? So, we, we need to be nimble enough to make those types of things work within the system that we have.
You know, it's like, Granby's Public Schools used to have, and at West Street School was the Learning Center, and it was where the stage was in that old building, and there was, you know, pullouts for the advanced kids for math and, um, and English, and then, you know, could be in one or both, and, you know, we used to have that kind of programming many, many years ago.
Yeah, and there's so many variables when you start thinking about this, that, you know, you know, the buzz, a buzzword in education is about rigor, right? So, are these courses rigor, rigorous enough? But we also then need to take a step back and say, how are we defining rigor? Because the way that I define it might be a little bit different than you do, different than the teacher does, so, um, you know, I, I think part of rigor is how are we appropriately challenging students, and that means getting to know those students, having the data, being able to use the data, to Stephanie's point, you have the information, now. To Stephanie's point, you have the information, now what do you do with it? And we realized that, and I think, I don't think, I know, I was really excited that after the second benchmark assessment that we did in January, early February, teachers started to say, I'm noticing students are struggling in this area. I'm noticing gaps in this area, but now what do I do? Which got the leadership team moving to say, all right, not that this is a like final solution, but this is something that could help in that area. And then for me to walk into that classroom to say, we got these teachers, these resources, the teachers are using them, they're letting the high school senior interns use them with kids to like build up those skills, was exciting to both see and hear. Because those are the conversations we want to be happening, we want to be having. You know, I think one area too that warrants a little bit more digging is how do we, how do we schedule? How do we plan? And how are people using their collaboration time, right? So not saying that we need to be watching over people every minute of every day and how they're using it, but first of all, is the schedule that we've set up conducive to provide teachers with that time? Is it conducive to allowing students to get an intervention that they need, be it advanced or additional support? And then how are we using that time consistently and productively? Talked a lot about feedback. I mentioned early on about, we've been in 100 different classrooms this year. We created this new walkthrough tool that the leadership team was really excited about using. And after using it a few times, I think the leadership team took a step back and said, the tool's great and it has a lot in it, but it's cumbersome. There's a lot to it. Is it really what we can use when we're in a classroom for 10 minutes? How are we going to generate like feedback that is actionable for teachers to use if we're stuck in this walkthrough tool trying to find things? So already talking, how do we whittle it down? Do we, are we more specific about our focus areas rather than having the five or six that we identified? Do we identify two target areas for next year and things like that? And then sharing that with teachers at the beginning of the year and saying, these are the things that we're looking for when we come into your classrooms, right? Being transparent with the teachers, they know what we're looking for. We're going in, we're looking for those things and then that we can, we can provide feedback on them. So I think we're, we're getting there. We're, again, we're taking these steps, we're trying some things out. There's sure to be some trial and area, trial and error certainly, but I think our goal is to continue to push the work forward and not stop when we meet these kinds of obstacles. Same thing with educator evaluation. I think in some places, our process has improved, but calibrating the feedback amongst the leadership team, more inter-rater reliability, feedback for all teachers, all teachers deserve feedback. I think our teachers want feedback and I think that's an area that we need to look into and pay a little bit more attention to. This has come up here in these meetings, I've heard it. It's come up in school, it's come up with parents. I think our criteria for students transitioning in and out of interventions isn't clearly enough to find. You know, I think if we have more targeted interventions, if our data is saying, we have this group who's struggling with phonemic awareness or struggling with fluency, whatever it might be, can we, can we identify the criteria that that group of students goes into an intervention for a defined amount of time? Is it four weeks, six weeks, whatever it might be? And then we're continuing to assess to see if they're making progress in those areas that we've identified. And I think, you know, people are working hard and with very good intentions. I think some more structure and a system around those things would benefit staff and students. Communication, I think we've done a good job in some places. I think there's a clear system, like we talked about systems, there's a system for documenting and communicating attendance issues at the junior, senior high school. Same with attendance and behavior incidents. I think that work is going to look different at the elementary school, but we have a framework that we can start from. And I think that's an area that East Meadow specifically would benefit from. We've been working all year, our plan, we met again last week, the emergency preparedness team. With a new superintendent, a new police chief, a new fire chief, all in the last year, that work did take a little bit of a pause, right? We still had the emergency operation plan, but during those transitions, the work on that plan specifically, we hit pause a little bit, but the action didn't stop. We continued. This year, the first time since I've been here, we've had two tabletop on emergency response, tabletop activities where we had the leadership team at one, just the leadership team, and then the second one, we had the leadership team with the administrative assistants from central office in both schools. And we worked through different scenarios. One was a hazardous spill in a building. One was a robbery at the liquor store down there and how we respond. And, you know, the police are there, the fire department's there, we project the campus up there and set up different areas. So we're having those conversations. You know, we've had lockdown drills, teach in place, not teach in place, shelter and teach drills at both schools. And I think, you know, I really appreciate the partnership that we have with both the Granby Police and Fire Department, have really good productive meetings with them. Like I said, we met on the emergency operation plan again last week. And we talked about at either our, one of our September or October meetings, having the police department, fire department, myself present the changes to the school committee. So that work will continue. You know, we've been practicing our drills and things like that. And I think, you know, I know even in my own daughter's school, there, there's been a heightened sense of concern in the past week and stuff. And when I spoke with the police and fire chief, we felt good about the work that we've done and didn't want to panic families or students by trying to like push things in in the last six or seven days of school. I think we want to trust our process, although the plan needs to be updated. I think we've stayed up to date with our practice where Officer Gilly and Mr. Taylor attended, attended Alice training last year that we had here at East Meadow. We're in constant conversation with them. I think even, you know, after the unfortunate incident in Texas a couple of weeks ago, Officer Gilly had two scheduled days out, the next two days. And Chief O'Grady and I were on the phone that night. He was present, he had officers present throughout the day. Just to, right? Like I think we know that because these horrific incidents are happening around the country, it doesn't make it more or less likely to happen in Granby, but we want to make sure that we have good relationships, we have good protocols, we have good practice and, and plans in place. And I think those partnerships with police and fire are really helpful. The fact that I can text Chief O'Neill or Chief O'Grady at any point and just say, hey, this is what I'm thinking, I need this, or they do the same, I think has been really beneficial to us. And Officer Gilly is just in his second year as school resource officer and just like James White before him, he truly is a school resource officer. I don't think we see him as a police officer in the school, we see him as a resource. Communication, I think one place that nobody here is going to be surprised that we know needs to be better is our website. You know, I think we have a more, an increased presence in social media. I think it could be more cohesive and it could be more, better aligned in places, but we're certainly, like the intentions are good and we're trying to improve there. Like I have pictures from senior banquet last night that I'm like, I have to post those on Instagram that I haven't done that, like.
I can give you something. I was randomly today, I got a text from my daughter and she's like, hey, can you add money to my account because I want to buy juice because I've got something going after school. It took me 25 minutes to remember where, what was even called. I was like, is it family ID? No.
This is the problem with universal free lunch.
But I was like, you know, the My School Bucks, or yeah, My School Bucks or whatever should be a link in our, you know, underneath dining so that you can add money to your account. Because even though it's been free lunch, if you wanted a double lunch, if you wanted all a cart, whatever, any of those kinds of things. And I know a lot of the, in the high school anyway, a lot of the kids will get snacks, extra snacks because they'll take it with them for bus rides or after school. So I was like, oh, there's, there's a note that I was going to send you, but now we'll just put it out there. It's just, you know, to have a link out there that's like, oh.
That should be something. I could not remember My School Bucks for the life of me.
So we know that.
It's better than it was though. We have made, I feel like we've made great strides compared to what it was.
We have, but we're not satisfied either, so fair enough though.
Yeah.
Are we still using the app too? I, I don't think the app is.
No.
I can delete that off my phone now. I actually went on it today to see if I could find it. You know, what's funny is I did just, I was like looking for something again, like super random. I was like, I wonder if it's, my like little cloud run there, I was like, I guess maybe I'll update.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but even.
So there's current stuff, there's current stuff on there?
Cause it just, it links to the web, it links to the website, the feed.
Yeah.
Yes.
Not the best resource.
Probably not.
Okay.
We have a plan that we're working on to.
He's like, enough already?
Right? Well, because I thought it was absolutely, because it is.
I'm not calling out our blemishes.
Because it is linked to the website though, it did, like I wasn't sure if that was still active or not. So, okay, we'll leave it there. But anyway, the website, yep.
I mean, we're with you. We agree.
I figured, I figured you would. And I figured Audrey would as well, if she were.
Yeah.
And then, again, finances and operations facilities, I think, right? There's another area where there's a lot to be proud of, right? Like we're a one-to-one district, a small community like this, that's not always the case. I think students and teachers have access to technology, especially in this building that, you know, is, is incredible. I think with the smart boards and the assisted, the, the audio in each classroom and things like that, I think really our students really benefit from. Another drum that I know I've been beating is over $300,000 in competitive grants this year. So really a lot of good things and things that we should be proud of. I also think one of the goals that I said to Adam early on, I said, if we can get our budget passed on a majority vote at town meeting this year, I would be happy with that. And not only did we do that, but two capital improvement items got passed with, I mean, or 80 votes, but they were fairly overwhelming majorities. I think it was 6614 and 6812 that those two capital improvement requests. And, you know, credit Adam and the leadership team for being out there with me and trying to get to the GMPA and Booster Club and go to where people were. And, you know, I think that this year was a good step, but there's opportunity to build on that work too. And who do we, who do we connect with, right? Is it someone we meet at Dyno Fest or at Charter Days? Is it somebody else that we can bring in when we're having those conversations? Is it somebody else that we can get to town meeting? And, you know, I think, I was, I was happy with the way that town meeting went, you know, and I think there were people that we would have hoped to have seen there or maybe expected to see there that weren't there, that typically are in favor of the schools. So I think there's reason for optimism in that as well, that the budget passed without some people that, you know, at least I've seen at other town meetings that have supported the schools.
Real quick, just something, some feedback that I had gotten. I know that you were talking about beating the drum of the $300,000 grants, which is amazing, but someone had said to me, you know, like where is that? Like are we putting that out there? Do people, does the town know? Like, I know that we went to town meeting and unfortunately, there was only like 80 people there, that's not very many. But that kind of had me, and maybe that's a school committee goal even that we do, and we do for a year, like highlight for, and we can incorporate that, so not to.
Yeah, I, I think it's a fair question, Stephanie. Does the town know? I don't know, but I think we have done a good job on trying to communicate that and share that as much as we can. And I think that's one of the things when we talk about communication and systems is if the communication through our meetings, through our social media, through the website, whatever it might be, isn't getting to people, how do we get to some more people? And how do we get to people, how do we get information to people in a way that they see it for what it is and not question it, right? Like $300,000, that's, those are things that we're paying for. The literacy grant is $111,000 on resources, materials and training that we were in dire need of, that was going to have to be in our budget over the course of likely multiple years. And it could come, it could have come at the cost of losing a position or losing an extracurricular or something like that because of the need. But because we were able to get the grant.
And not just saying the dollar and cents is what's even important, but what that's giving our district. Like not that, you know, we need the big ticket price shock, but like what is that providing? Like I think that's huge. Like sometimes that's even sounds more to me than money because in the scheme of things, you know, I don't want to get lost behind the dollar amount, but what improvements it's going to make for our students.
And I think that that's a really good point. And also what is that replacing, right? So the curriculum that had been in place, part of the reason that we pursued that grant was the curriculum that was, had been being used was on that grant that said, if you use these curriculum, you'll have priority for this grant. And we were, we were using one of those, right? And that's not to say that it was terrible or it didn't help students or anything like that, but things become out of date and things in education shift and not every community is able to shift with those times as rapidly as others. And I think it was just a product of a number of things that allowed us to pursue that and get that. And I think to your point, our students in grades K to five starting next year are going to have a stronger background in literacy because of the materials that they're going to be using and because of the training their teachers will have. And I expect that will only improve in subsequent years because like anything, once you start to use it a few times, you're going to find ways to tailor it to your strengths and your students' needs. So in some ways it feels like it's strange to kind of close this out, but then I also have a slideshow about the end of cycle. I don't know how much you want me to go through that, a lot of it is redundant. But, you know, as I begin my second year, several areas in which these findings will assist me in developing a comprehensive plan of action. This plan of action will result in a strategic plan designed to guide the Granby Public Schools for the next three to five years. It's important to note that significant work in this process is already underway. In the 21, 22 school year, we have worked collaboratively to identify focus standards at each grade level that instruction will be aligned to, that has been aligned to. We have applied for and received a grant in excess for $110,000 to purchase new early literacy curriculum, pre-K or K to five, excuse me, that will provide resources, materials and training for educators. We've adopted second step, a research-based social emotional learning program in grades pre-K through six to ensure consistency and continuity in our approach to support the whole child. We are working to identify the best and most practical ways to provide effective feedback to our staff. We are creating data dashboards that we anticipate staff will be able to use to make informed decisions about individual and small groups of students as well as entire classes and even grade levels. There's ongoing dialogue at the district leadership level focused on finding high-leverage actions, instructional best practices, common structures and expectations, strategies for student engagement, ways to increase the demands of students with appropriate real-time support, to name a few, that will lead to more consistent student growth and improved outcomes. The goal is to identify opportunities that are beneficial to students as well as staff. So the strategic plan, and I will certainly be looking for stakeholders to give their input to that and we'll start that work over this summer. Um, and we'll start that work over this summer and hope, um, by late fall, winter, to have a draft of that to all of you. Any questions? And/or how would you like to go through the end of cycle review? Again, it's, a lot of it is. So you'll see the end of cycle review, the format is the same as the mid-cycle review. So the first four slides are the same. Um, slides five through 12 have been updated to include new information or things that have changed since, um, this was presented in March. It wasn't quite mid-cycle. We were a little bit beyond that midpoint, so, um, you know. And then there's also the evidence folder that is public-facing on the website as well, that new infra, new artifacts of evidence have been added to. You know, I guess one of my takeaways is, um, I think myself and the leadership team, we're probably always hardest on ourselves. And the areas in need of improvement or further exploration, I think there's probably more of those that I've listed here than the successes on the right track. Um, and I want to be clear, that doesn't mean that there aren't great things happening in the Granby Public Schools. I think our focus has been on how do we build on those things? But also, how do we address, um, some of those areas of concern that we talked about through the report of entry findings?
I, I feel like that a lot of the information is the same, but do you want him to go over anything in particular for?
I don't know that there's anything, for me at least, that you need to review and go over again, you know, based on, um, going over the entry plan findings that you just reviewed. Um, if there's anything in addition that you just want to highlight in terms of, um, the slides with the end of cycle review, I mean, certainly feel free. Um, but I certainly appreciate the format and the breakdown. And I think in terms of kind of allowing us to pull all the information together, you know, that structure is, I think, really helpful. So, thank you for that.
Of course, yeah. And, um, I appreciate that you guys gave me the feedback the first time around because I feel in the mid-cycle review, I wasn't really sure what would work, what format would work. And I heard from you all that that format worked because I think the purpose here, I think we would all agree, is there's a lot of information and this isn't even all of it. I think we're picking and choosing, unpicking and choosing what's going in, what's going on, or what's not going in. Um, so I want the format to work for you all. I think it needs to be something that you can digest in a way that makes sense. And if it doesn't, please let me know so I can shift or make adjustments, um, in the future. But, um, you know, and again, like I said, it's not everything that we've done and not everything listed in evidence has something. There's certain things that I just can't make a copy of and share publicly because it's got names and things like that. So even the evidence, we had to pick and choose a little bit.
Did you do the parade, the graduate parade?
Um, Friday, this Friday.
I, I was gonna, I've been hearing about those because it's, you know, as your kids get older, you become more surrounded with like graduations and different things. And, um, they call it the, um, the farewell walk.
Okay.
And I was like, that is just so cool. So that, you know, the graduates with their caps and guns on and walk through the school, like, you know, Will and South Hadley, they do all the different schools and see all the different teachers and stuff. So I was wondering if we were gonna do that. And I, I think that's just so great. You know, a chance for them to reconnect and the teachers to reconnect and like, you know, I think it's awesome.
It's actually, pardon my superintendent report, but this Friday morning, um, the graduates will be at East Meadow. So nice to be on one campus. They're gonna come in. It's just, they're gonna do a, um, a parade, but we're gonna have the students from East Meadow come out of their classroom. We let them know last week, so if they wanted to make signs or anything. And the graduates will have their, at least their gowns on because they have rehearsal right after and they'll, they'll walk the building so they can see their teachers and then the younger students can see them.
That's awesome.
Awesome. So great.
Um, any other information on this? So we need to, we can use these in the evidence folder to fill out our stuff to get back to you for the, um, for the 14th. And George, so hopefully we'll be able to get everything squared away for you so that you can, you know, have access to this. Um, so that you can, um, because once you become a member, you will do that unless it's, we missed the deadline to get you on track. So I'm not really sure how, how long that process will take, but, um, anything else for that?
No, and just if there's any questions about the form itself, like certainly.
Sure.
You know, you can reach out to one of us.
Okay. Sounds great. Um, school capacity?
We don't have any update on that. Um, the last date to apply for a school choice seat before we would do the first, um, first lottery, if we needed to, is Friday, June 24th. So the only reason we would do a lottery is if there are more applicants than we have spaces at a grade level.
Okay.
So if anybody is watching and wondering about school choice and considering applying, now would be a good time. And after June, after June 24th, if we don't have more numbers, if we don't have more, um, applicants than we have seats available, we would notify those who have applied that they would be accepted for the 22-23 school year. So nothing else on capacity?
All right. Uh, so next is enrollment dashboard?
Yeah, so enrollment, we're up two again.
Awesome.
Um, so our May enrollment, we're up to 724. Um, they were both entries, um, no withdrawals. And unfortunately, we still don't have the finalized charter school and school choice, um, numbers. I asked Stacy to, or I didn't ask Stacy, Stacy took the initiative and looked. Last year she found out on June 21st and two years ago she found out on June 30th. So we're right in that time. If we don't have it by the 29th, we'll have it, um, at our July meeting.
Now, the 724 number is.
Seven twenty-four.
That's the enrollment.
Yep.
But our Sims number was 708-ish, right? Because October, is it, which one was submitted to the state that our?
October first snapshot.
It was less than 708.
Yeah, because it's really resident enrollment, so it's 683.
Two or three.
I think. It doesn't include our choice in.
Right, right, of course. So.
And our choice in exceeds our choice out, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, like, June, July, if we look back, those are the months where we start to see biggest sways in our numbers because our graduates, incoming pre-K, incoming K. So there's volatility in the numbers, um, between now and September, certainly.
Which graph is it? How many of our seniors that are graduating are school choice this year?
I know it's on here. I'm just, I'm like off phones right now. Deft on the line?
Six.
Okay.
And one is tuitioned in.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or anything on enrollment dashboard? Okay, superintendent's report.
Um, so we've talked about, this is pretty senior-heavy. Um, Senior Awards Night is this Thursday, June 9th, 6:00 PM, um, at the Sullivan Gymnasium at the Junior-Senior High School. As we mentioned before, our graduates will be doing a parade here at East Meadow this Friday morning. Um, so they'll get to see their former West Street and East Meadow teachers and our, um, younger students will get to see the graduates. Graduation is Saturday, June 11th at 10:00 AM. It will be outdoors. Keep your fingers crossed for good weather. Um, Fri- Friday, June 10th, Monday, June 13th, and Tuesday, June 14th are half-days for final exams at the Junior-Senior High School. Wednesday, June 15th is our last day of school and that is an early dismissal for everybody. 11:00 AM at the Junior-Senior High School, 11:40 at East Meadow. And just so everybody knows, we are closing down campus at 2:00 PM on Wednesday, the 15th because we are doing an end-of-year celebration. We're doing, both schools are invited. Um, so by closing campus down at 2, that allows our administrative assistants, custodians and others to attend. Um, so we just wanted to make sure that they could do that. And, um, then I just also wanted to take a minute. This came up at the last meeting and just, I'm not gonna connect a name to it, but just want to give people an idea of where our graduates are headed, um, in the fall. So we have students headed to the University of Rhode Island, Hoya Community College, Western New England University, Endicott University, American University, Springfield College. Um, we have a student going to Griffin Electrical for an apprenticeship, um, Mount Hoyo College, Johnson and Wales, Westfield State University, Boston University, Rollins University, University of Vermont, American International College, University of Arizona, Northeastern, Mass College of Pharmacists, um, UMass Lowell, Worcester State University, University of New Haven, Salem State University, University of South Carolina, UMass Amherst, Wheaton. And then there are a couple of students who are taking a gap year. Um, and they're participating in a Valitec, Valitec Soccer Academy, um, abroad is my understanding. Yes, we do have Springfield Technical Community College. Um, and I thought I saw one more apprenticeship, but I'm mistaken. So again, I mean, some really top-notch colleges and universities. Um, you know, for Little Granby to continue to send students, um, to these colleges and universities, I think is a credit to certainly the community, the parents, the students themselves and the staff. So, um, you know, appreciate you all asking for this and, um, want to do a better job of making sure that we're promoting that. But that's just this year's group.
Awesome. And what's the graduating rate for this year? Do we know?
Don't have it up, I don't have it off the top of my head because basically it's based off of incoming freshman year class and there's things that I just don't have.
Perfect.
So, they never make it easy.
Um, any other, um, questions or anything?
Is there an update at all about the summer enrichment program? We know that information went out.
Yes, that information's out. It is on the website. Um, there are, um, programs available for students in the younger grades all the way up through 12th grade. There are health and nutrition classes for the older kids. Um, there are costs associated with them, but, you know, if that becomes a challenge for people, we're certainly open to having the conversation. Um, as I've said from the get-go, I think I first shared it with you all in March. We know we are late to the game, but we're gonna do our best to push it this year and learn from it so that we're in a better place next year to have people, um, to have a process set up and a system set up. But summer enrichment program, if you click right on top, you can sign in. Um, course descriptions, there's a Foundations of Functional Fitness and Nutrition course, um, film as literature, recreational sports, starter instrument lessons, pickleball for all from beginner to advanced, math, uh, math booster for grades three, four and five, uh, phonics and math booster for grades one and two, um, sock puppet and script writing, um, a STEM week, playground games, top-secret mystery kit, gardening in East Meadows courtyard. What we have right now, so.
Yeah, just to continue to highlight this for anybody.
Yep, and we sent out a robocall today. The website's out and, um, you know. So if people have questions, contact information is on the website for Leslie Mahoney and Lynn Pollard, um, who are the coordinators or Lynn is at East Meadow and Leslie's at the Junior-Senior High School. So you can call through the main office as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here we go.
Okay, I've got a couple of things. One, the food service RFP has been posted finally.
I thought you were gonna start that one.
No. So those will, um, we'll be opening those, or they're due back by June 27th. Um, something we did add this year is we will have a mandatory pre-bid walkthrough on Friday, June 17th for all prospective bidders. Um, so they can see, um, what they'll be working with or not working with.
Do we know if Tartwells will be rebidding to do it or?
I would assume so.
Okay, I just didn't know if it was.
I would assume so.
They're like, yeah, this isn't working for us, so we're gonna.
Yeah, no, I mean, no, but I would assume so.
Okay.
So that's where we're at with that. We still got a couple of weeks. Um, so I'll update everyone once we, um, once that process is finalized. Um, second, we had submitted that, um, transfer fund request to the finance board for the total amount of above and beyond costs to the boilers at the high school that we have incurred. It was for a total of $25,284.21. At the time that we submitted that transfer, the account balance where those expenses were paid from was a, in the negative, $16,409.79. So ultimately, the finance committee only approved the transfer amount for that amount. Um, they had a meeting, oh, May 25th. It was only to approve this. Um, there was just a, a statement made by John about how, uh, he doesn't think that we're aware of how the transfer process works. Um, and I guess I agree with him because I don't know how it works and, and I haven't been educated on how that works. Um, but talking to Stephen today, I thought we were pretty clear um, that the amount that we incurred of expenses was above and beyond what we had budgeted. And I thought that message was received accurately by the town and this was the process that they told us to follow to recoup that money. Um, so there, I'll be the first to admit, there is a disconnect on how this transfer process works and, and.
Awesome.
What it should cover. So, we asked for $25,284.21. We got $16,409.79. It covers about 75, 80%, whatever that percentage is.
And so the reason we were only in the negative, was there an outstanding bill that hadn't been paid to, to make, make up that last $8,000 or whatever, $9,000 to make the 25?
No, the 20, no, no, so, so the full $25,000 was paid out of that account that's a negative. So really, we only had 8,000 or so in that account to begin with. We paid all them, so it's in the negative by 16,000.
I understand.
If we had gotten, if they had approved the transfer for the 25,000, that account would essentially be zero. It'd have no, uh, negative balance. So now it'll only, it'll be back to, it'll be back to zero. Sorry. If they approved the full transfer, we would have had about 8,000 in there. They only approved what the negative balance was at that time, so that account is now zero.
Okay.
Um, but again, I thought we were pretty clear that these were costs above and beyond what we had budgeted and this was the process that we were told to follow, so.
So I guess they're probably saying, well, if it was 25,000 over, we should have been in the negative 25,000 over because we still had, we had budgeted 12 or something, $1,000. So I'm sure, you know, to me, it feels like a little bit of semantics, but.
Yeah, can we, can we try to get some more clarity?
And you know what? And, you know, I, so, okay, let's, because I don't know what the process is, and, you know, so let's have Mr. Martin and Ms. Libera give us a transfer process for dummies, like, you know, spell it out for us, that, you know, is it, should it come from a different way?
Yeah, another point that they, the finance committee brought up was that, you know, we do have our own authority to transfer funds between accounts or between cost centers, which would be from salaries to expenses, which we certainly could do. Again, our point was, we've incurred these costs in the past, and they've been questioned why we've done that, so now we were transparent that we've incurred them now, so...
And then we have that conversation with Mr. Martin on camera, where he was like, you know, that you guys are hurting yourselves, so, you know, it's, I think, we're gonna have to, you know, we're, I feel like it's a growing pains thing.
Yeah, yeah. Very appreciative that they approved a portion of it.
Yeah, I'm glad they approved the $6,000, that's huge. And then, this is, budget for dummies is, so we're at zero, so we're ending our fiscal year at zero, but we're, that money will be coming back within the...
No, no, just, just that account.
Just that account, no, but like, with our new budget that starts July 1, that money is that, like, we have what we budgeted for.
We start all over again, yes.
Just so it's clear that we're, you know, we don't have, we're not at $0 for being able to...
Yeah, and we're, we're a little far out from knowing what the end of FY '22 looks like. Like, we're in the cleanup period now, so that won't be for another month or so, until we know exactly where we are.
So if we have to request another transfer, we'll request another transfer.
And I think, in some ways, Adam and I would agree that Mr. Libera is correct, that we, there are times where we could move money around and pay for something unanticipated, and we're happy to engage in those discussions, but we're trying to follow the process that we were told to follow, and I think that looks different if we send that in September versus sending it in May, because in September, we have 10 months ahead of our budget, and we don't know. Right now, there's still some question, but we know if we might have a little bit of wiggle room here or there, that we could then say, you know what, we're $25,000 over, we think we can cover 6,000 of it, whatever it might be, so we didn't know if there might be some discussion to follow it up, but we sent out the request, they had a very brief meeting, approved what they approved, which, again, we appreciate, and I think it's about us following up and...
And I think too, it's all a learning process, like, we, you know, we've done a lot of the transfers over the past, since I've been here, you know, and so I think, I think part of our communication process that we've been talking about is, we're going to be really informing them more often with, you know, when we have extra repairs that we do, when we have these unanticipated expenses, we're gonna, and it's how, I believe it was explained to us to do, so that there's not any questions when we say we're over or under, or, you know, we need more money for this, that, or the other thing, it becomes clearer to everybody involved where some of that money has been, you know, going. Not that there's ever a question, I don't think anyone's ever saying that we're not, we're doing anything untoward, just, you know, just...
And I think, yeah, I think you and I and Adam have the same understanding, so...
Okay, great.
Yep.
Perfect.
That's all I have.
No, you don't.
We're still waiting, we're still waiting on...
When's the official anniversary?
I think, uh...
Again, we said it's...
July.
July 16th, I think.
We'll bring our freshmen back, too.
Yeah, sure. An excuse for some...
Well, yeah, we'll have a meeting right around it, right? So, July 19th, so we can, we can have a little celebratory snack.
So, that's all I have.
Uh, CES?
Cookie, stare at me in the face.
So, we met on May 25th, our next meeting is June 22nd. They did, and I don't know, Stephen, if you've gotten it, the brochure from CES that they were sending out, so they said they were sending it one out to each superintendent, and I do have a copy...
Email or hard copy?
They said they were sending out a hard copy.
I don't think I've got one.
And I do have a copy of what it is here, just kind of a snapshot of different services that they provide, the member districts, different information. So, you know, I think it's something good to have on hand, at least, just to kind of highlight what they do for the member districts, you know, what it looks like, things like that, because it was all in color and whatever, they said that they were only sending kind of one copy to each district, and then obviously, there's the digital copy, so I just wanted to note that, and...
Could you put that in our folder?
Yes, I will, I need to make the folder, but I will do that.
Perfect.
They did review the budget for FY '22 to close it, and then starting with '23, a proposed and projected budget, that was part of the discussion there.
Ending with...
Through all of the information of some of the programs that they're putting together, and the beginning discussion of the evaluation, because they're actually moving that part out a little bit based on some of the information that was happening there, because they're doing a 360 evaluation, so it's every stakeholder, everybody that puts in a survey and information for the executive director. So, that was pretty much everything.
They happen to mention anything about the bid list that they provide? It was just interesting, this year, we, I usually get an alert when the bid lists are made available, and I didn't get one, I had to go find it that had been out there, so I didn't know if it was...
No. They didn't say anything about a bid list, they did say that they were looking at their fees and cost to kind of member districts, because they hadn't gone up in the past few years, since they were probably going up, just like they did with tuition rates and, you know, things like that for students. That was pretty much it.
All right. Anything else before we go to executive session?
Not for me.
All right. So George will send that email, and you should be hearing back from them, and we'll, I'll send the email, and I think I have your email from Stephen, and then I'll copy you in when I send it, and then you'll have my email as well, and then we can, you know, get that whole process going.
Okay.
We're gonna vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Part A3, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining, as doing so in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session.
Ms. Barlow?
Aye.
Ms. Perrin?
Aye.
Ms. Felton's here?
Aye.